And the first tonight, our Student Board of Representatives are Maren Hoffman and Danielle. I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name.
It's Surtick.
Surtick, okay, thank you.
Both National Affairs.
Oh, fantastic. And I see you're wearing your sweaters, most groovy. And the first item we have up for discussion is our education legislative update with Amy Atwood, who will be joining us by Zoom.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, good evening. I am Amy Atwood, lobbyist, contract lobbyist for the district. I am still here at the Capitol tonight. We have had a very, very big day today. So, let's just jump right in and talk about the state budget and school funding. So, the state budget has not been introduced yet, and it is running a week behind. And because there are so many cuts in the state budget, there were so many decisions that had to be made by the Joint Budget Committee that they, they just couldn't get it, get through all of it. Usually, it runs the last week of March, first week of April. We do anticipate that it will get introduced on Monday. You may have read that the state going into this year was over a billion dollars in the red. So, the Budget Committee has had to find millions and millions, hundreds of millions of dollars to cut. The good news is that today, the Joint Budget Committee made the decision that the new School Finance Funding Formula would go into place and start implementation next year in the 2025-26 budget. There has been a lot of behind-the-scenes lobbying and work done to not have the new formula go into place. And so, today was, was a big vote. That then, this vote sets the stage for how much we will have in, in school funding for next year. And there is not a large cut, or even a cut at all, to K-12 funding. We'll see, once we see the budget on Monday. But, the Joint Budget Committee has been, has been committed to not cutting K-12 education. So, at least, at least, funding will be flat. So, next year will be like this year. There may be an increase. So, that is, that's what you can plan on. Peter and I have gone back and forth a number of times over these last few weeks with different scenarios, and how, how will it impact D-49? And everything is trending in a good, in a good direction for the district. So, we should see the School Finance Act on Monday, likely on Monday as well. And it'll run in conjunction with the budget. So, in our world, having the budget close so it can get introduced, and knowing how much money is going into, into K-12 education, it is, it is a big milestone for everything we do in K-12 legislation. So, that, that's the budget and funding. The next part that I want to give an update on is where are we in session? So, we have six weeks left of session. Session is four months. If you remember, it starts January, this year was January 7th, and it goes through May 7th. It's 120 days, and there is a hard stop on May 7th. So, if bills have not passed, they, they die, they die what they call on the calendar. Because the funding is so tight this year, or there are cuts, we have not seen the amount of legislation, the number of bills that we usually do. We're at about 550 bills with six weeks to go. And last year, we had 750 bills. So, because there isn't any money for legislation, it's really cut back on the amount of bills. And we've also seen that in K-12 legislation as well. The numbers, I mean, we're, we're at about 30% of the usual amount of bills that we're seeing in K-12 education. So, with six weeks left, once we get through the budget, we'll probably have three weeks, three and a half weeks left, and bills will start to either pass because they were, they've been funded in the budget, or a lot of bills are going to die. It has been not a particularly contentious session so far. And I think that's because a lot of bills are, are sitting waiting to see if they'll get funding. So, there, there haven't been the big floor debates in both chambers. So, the divisiveness, we haven't seen that quite yet. There have been a few bills, but we really haven't seen that quite yet. So, with that, I, I want to open it up for questions. If you have questions on specific pieces of legislation that you've heard about, or I can go through a couple, a couple of bills that you probably have heard about.
Director Heil?
Hi, Amy. So, when I'm hearing about the total allocation from the state projected to be flat, although, of course, it can still change between now and then, and we've been seeing a statewide slow decline in student count, so would that then, would we expect to see a small increase in PPR as a result of all this?
Only if you are in a declining enrollment district. So, the districts that are seeing declining enrollment, they, they are the ones that could be seeing a reduction. But with all the scenarios that we have seen, it is a four-year averaging, which is what all the districts were planning on, because that's what was passed last year, was a four-year averaging. And if they have, if they are seeing decline so that they're not held flat, they will be held flat. So, there's been a guarantee that districts that could be cut because of declining enrollment won't be cut. They'll be held flat.
Yeah, that's another factor I wasn't thinking of. Thank you for that.
My question is, as far as, you talked about the bills that die on the calendar. What other significant bills that directly affect K through 12 education that you see on the docket right now?
Sure. So, House Bill 1278, Educator Accountability System. If you remember, I've reported for the last two, two weeks, two years, that there has been the Accountability Task Force that has been meeting to make recommendations to really revamp the entire accountability system. So, that group came, came forward with their recommendations. They had 30 recommendations that they reported on in November. And House Bill 1278 has all of the recommendations in it. There were a number of amendments that passed today. And the amendments were to clarify the intent of the recommendation. There wasn't a recommendation that was taken away. It was more that the bill wasn't written to how the, how the task force, the intent of the task force. So, in a good, good budget year, it would have an impact on the district. And I've worked with district staff all the way through. They've seen the recommendations. I've gotten feedback on the recommendations. So, we've been actively engaged in, in the recommendations and also in the bill. But the bill costs over $5 million to implement. So, it won't be, it won't be implemented in its current form. There will be a lot of the recommendations that will be stripped out of the bill. And those are the big recommendations, because those are the ones that will, that will cost the state money. So, we'll, we maybe will see a couple, maybe a handful of them that come through. But the biggies that would have a real impact likely aren't going to pass.
Are you seeing that across the board with pending legislation, where depending on the cost, that's what could be throttling back some of it?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think that, um, the budget, the state budget is so, so tight and, and was in the hole going into this session, that there really isn't money for new programs, for anything new. Just funding what we currently have in the state has been a stretch. So, educate K-12 education is, out of all of the big departments, coming out the best. Higher Ed has been cut. Medicaid provider rates have been cut. Those are, and in K-12 education, it doesn't appear is going to get cut. So, they have pulled from other places in the budget to, you know, just cover what is already in place. So, bills that are going to cost a lot of money are going, or cost any money, even $300,000, is going to have a hard time passing. I do have another bill that I would like to bring to your attention. It is, and this that you specifically asked, that would impact the district. So, there is House Bill 1210, Data Reporting Requirements for Kindergarten Through 12th Grade Schools. So, we have heard from districts all over that the data reporting is crushing. It takes so much time. It is so costly, and it is so resource intense with all of the data reporting. And there is duplication from this report to this report, or it's slightly different, but it's asking the same question. So, 1210 sets up a task force to look at the data reporting requirements, and really try to streamline them down, so that districts don't have to spend so much time on reporting. And there is also some data reporting that, the data just flat out isn't being used anymore. It may never have been used. But until there's an audit of all of the, all of the reporting, we don't know which ones, what, what can be streamlined and what can go away.
Am I correct that there were additional proposed amendments to the REED Act as well?
Um, you could, there isn't a straight-up, unless the Education Accountability System has REED Act implications, right now, there isn't a bill that specifically is targeting the REED Act?
Yeah, I had heard about additional amendments, but I know it's been amended several times since its implementation, so.
Okay.
So, I'll coordinate with you on that, just because that was one thing I had heard. Unless, Peter, have you heard about that as well?
No, and I'm, along with Amy, we pay attention to the legislative tracker from Colorado Association of School Executives. Amy has her own tracker. That's not one that, and I, and I attend either the Legislative Committee meetings themselves, or the sessions when we had the case conference. And so, the, all of the attention and energy is around other things. There's a financial literacy requirement. There are some other kind of content-specific requirements. Not, I have not heard any discussion at all about REED Act amendments.
Student Board, are there any questions that you would like to ask?
I didn't have any at this time.
I do not have any.
Did you say I'm finished?
I think so. And then, just a quick question. Do all of the board members have that bill tracker link?
So, I received that last year, but I have not received it this year. Is it the same link?
Um, no, it's a different link. I can resend it. I sent it like the very first day of session on January 7th. So, I'll just resend it out to everyone. And that has the full list of all the education bills on it. And I would encourage you, if you, if you do click on a bill, make sure you go to the most recent version, the latest version. Because at this point in time in session, bills have changed a lot, typically for the better, and they've been amended. So, just when you click on it, look for the most late, the most, I think it says latest version.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And I think you're done.
Okay, thank you. And please know, you can always email me, call me, or text me if you hear of something, and I can always chase it down.
All right, thanks for all you do.
Thanks.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Next up, we're onto item 1.22324, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. Tom Sustare with Holding &amp; Company. We've been performing your annual audit for a number of years now. You should all have just a summary of my presentation for tonight and the big thick audit itself. And I'm going to run down through that, but certainly ask any questions as you have them. Our team was onsite for about a week in early June, testing controls and compliance. Then we designed our audit programs, our audit procedures based on those tests. Fieldwork was performed over a week towards the end of September this year. We found that the overall financial condition of the district is strong, and the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. So, as in past years, we issued an unmodified or clean opinion. I mention this each year, but it bears repeating. You have, you have two different presentations within the financial statements. The fund statements reflect how the district keeps its books on a day-to-day basis. So, reports that the board receives and budgets are based on this fund presentation. The government-wide statements on the first couple of pages of the, the financial statements themselves combine all funds and are presented on the accrual basis. Government-wide statements include capital assets, debt, and other long-term liabilities that are not included in the funds. So, the first statement I want to look at is the Statement of Net Position. It, essentially, it's the balance sheet for the entire district. And hit a few highlights here. Cash and investments for the year were down about $23.4 million, primarily due to spending on capital projects. Other assets were down about $2.5 million. There really was a timing difference, yes.
I just, for the display, if you could click on the link so the community members can see what you're talking about, would be great. And then, board members, if you could hit refresh, some of that information has been updated.
Whoops.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's all right. Okay. Thank you. And, yes, that's what we want. Excellent. All right, so, I am on number three now. All right. So, again, other assets down about $2.5 million. That's primarily, primarily due to a decrease in grants receivable, which is a ti, just a timing difference. Capital assets up $26.7 million. That really corresponds to that decrease in cash, as you spent monies down on middle levy projects. Liabilities were up $32.9 million, primarily made up of net position and OPEB liabilities being up a little more than $40 million. Those pension and OPEB liabilities vary based on contributions as well as actuarial determinations. And they can fluctuate quite a bit from year to year. Net position or equity in the government-wide statements was down about $144,000 or .2%. So, no, no big changes there. Moving on to the general fund, and just really looking at a ratio of your fund balance to expenditures that increased this year from about 75 days to 99 days. Long-term debt, no additions there this year. Bonds, capital leases, were paid according to debt service schedules, so nothing unusual there. In number six here, I'm just going to hit a few highlights on the funds. The general fund was up $12.4 million. Overall revenue was up about 12%, while overall expenditures were up about 4%. Debt service fund balance was up about $5.6 million. Grant receipts were down about $2 million as ESER grants phased out and got on to, you just kind of got on to normal grant footing this year. Capital projects, middle levy fund balance was down about $49 million with five, pardon me, with $53 million spent on capital projects. Internal controls are a big focus of our audit, the big focus of our financial audit, as well as the, the grants audit. We had no internal control findings this year on either one, so it's really good news. Federal awards, again, big focus of our audit. There were no compliance issues noted in current year, so a good, clean report there. And last, I just want to express our appreciation for having us do the audit again this year. And to the finance team with Heather and her group, it was a challenging year this year, because they didn't have their people at the top. It was down to Heather, and she did a great job bringing everybody together. So, thank you to Heather. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Student Board, do you have any questions?
I don't.
I do not.
Board, okay. Director Heil?
So, I just want to make sure that, that folks know that this isn't a rubber stamp thing. You guys are getting in there and you're really looking. Are you guys the company that did the audit for a nearby district that has been making the news recently for all the wrong reasons?
Yes, you're the first, the second person that asked me that tonight. So, and that's right. If there's issues, you're going to see them reported.
Thank you.
Director Livia Wright?
I believe you all have been doing D-49s for at least 16, maybe even more like 20 years, at least, maybe longer.
Yeah, pretty close. I think since 2011, maybe 2010.
So, well, yep, so, because I've never heard from any audit company but yours. And I was, 2011 was the first one I would have heard, and then read and heard on combo. And I can tell you, if you look at older audits, you will see things that needed to be improved. And as a board and as a district, historically, over multiple boards, those were taken seriously and addressed systematically.
That's right.
So, it's taken a lot of work. And I think Heather's been there for a lot of that work, because she's been in our district for a long time, so she can attest to that too. So, if you think there was a rubber stamp, then go look 20 years ago, and take a look at what it has taken to improve each of those pieces and the systems that have been built to do it, based on their feedback, which is also incredibly important, because people can be too, trying to do the right thing. But unless you have someone help you see where your blind spots are, you can't get better. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Director Davola?
Yes, I want to personally thank Heather for all the work that she has done. We really value you getting in the trenches and being there for so long in order for the consistency to continue to happen. And you've definitely been a backbone of that department. So, thank you so much for all of that hard work that you've put into making sure we have clean audits.
I have to piggy that a bit, because District 49 has always led the way when it comes to financial transparency. And since you audit both us and other districts, you know that we do a lot with a little.
Yes.
That there are other districts that are far better funded than District 49. And so, when it comes to being good stewards of our resources, I appreciate the auditing and the double-checking, and I appreciate all the hard work that our team does to do a lot with a little. So.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
May I make an additional comment?
Sure.
In addition to the well-deserved accolades for Heather and the team, because it really does take a team, and that team has been operating thin for about 18 months, truthfully. So, they've done such a remarkable job. But remember when we came to you, and you would have seen Spencer present earlier in the school year, that we were going to have a mild shortfall in enrollment that was going to be, that was going to lead to about a million point two lower revenues? And yet, you just heard Tom say we were .2% change negative in our net position. And yet, you just heard Tom say we were .2% change negative in our net position. What that means is that zone leaders and principals and department leaders, certainly our financial staff, everybody was incredibly attentive this year to make sure that that $1.2 million never touched a classroom, didn't touch students. And I'm really proud of the team that did that. And part of why we can do that is because we get such great partnership with our auditing firm so we know what we can do and we know what we should avoid. So, deep gratitude throughout the organization because this year we protected our mission-critical learning and teaching from what could have been more impactful than it was.
Well, so, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you all very much, have a good evening.
Next, we have item 1.3, Director of Building Maintenance and Director of Grounds Maintenance. Dr. Fletcher is going to present.
Dr. Lou Fletcher, Executive Director, Facilities and Operations. I was just realizing it had been a while since I've been up here, so, welcome back. I said my mom, she taught me about, there's never a wrong time to do the right thing. My K-12 mentor, Peter Hiltz, has told myself and many audiences about doing the next right thing. I think that's an example of what we have in front of us right now. Definitely entrenched in the cultural compass about how we treat each other and how we treat our work. If you had a poll, like I said, we value all people's opinions, so... If you had a poll and you asked most people, they'd probably say, because this is not about the people in the position right now, but they are great examples, so I have to bring them into it. If you asked them about Daniel, if you asked them about CJ, they'd probably already say, "Aren't they directors?" And I would say to you, "They are." When we did this, in consultation with Paul Anderson, really and truly by definition, we could have simply said, "Let's just change the titles." Nothing substantive, very much change inside of the job description, and could have done it administratively. But I think when we have an opportunity to be transparent and do the right thing in front of people, we should give our governments that opportunity. Because you're going to get enough ire from people when you do things they don't like. But I think this is a thing that we can do together. Long story short, Daniel and CJ are the faces of this. But in the past, we had co-directors. And the natural progression, when these things got big enough for them to independently take on their teams, the natural migration would be director, director. Somewhere in the mix right there, we decided to create wholly new, you know, nomenclature for them, group manager. It doesn't communicate necessarily internally, and it definitely doesn't communicate externally. And as we look toward, many of us who are getting more and more gray hairs, most of mine are my beard, the ones on top I execute, we know that there's going to be some turnover in the future, and we're going to have to replace us with some new people who are going to be good people to respect the cultural compass. And for us to attract those people, we need to make sure that what we do internally communicates. Not only what we see in action every day, but also what communicates from what we believe in every day from the cultural compass. So that's kind of what this is all about. I mean, the difference in pay, I'll give some history on that kind of thing like that, is kind of negligible because what we have done, and one of the habits we got into, and Paul Anderson, thank goodness, is getting us out of it, is stipends. We would put stipends, daisy chain on top of stipends, and daisy chain on top of stipends. What are stipends for? They're for temporary things that you do for a little bit, not for things you do forever. So, it does a couple of things. It doesn't necessarily make their retirement right. It doesn't necessarily honor them, and it also puts them in a place where you've got to wonder if you get those stipends from year to year. So what we're really doing in this whole process right here is changing the name. Nothing substantive's changed about their roles. Daniel's still going to be out there at 3:00 in the morning caring about all of us and using trucks and whatever to shovel snow and talking about the roads and driving around and leading the team in the dark while we sleep so that we can be safe when we wake up. Daniel's still going to be out there when a pipe bursts at 2:00 in the morning with his team or HVAC goes down or during the day and that kind of thing. He's still going to be doing the same things he did before. But what it will signal now to people is that they are rightfully and truly the directors they've always been. And we get the opportunity to put them in a place where we respect that job and we respect that position, and we respect people coming in after them who know what it is. And I think this is kind of extension of the educational program, too. We talk about pathways. All pathways aren't college-intensive, and we don't want to create a path system where second-class and first-class citizens and things like that is about the work. If you do the work and you have the job, you are the person. You know, so, with that, you know, preamble, I'm here to answer your questions about things you really want to know about. I know one question is always asked. This is not increasing the amount of administrators because they're already administrators, go.
Would you mind, Dr. Fletcher, just opening the presentation just so the public can see it with us here?
Absolutely. The press of a button. As a retired Air Force missile air, I'm scared to press a button because I don't want to nuke anything, but there you go. This one is for the Director of Grounds Maintenance. And it would be taking the place of the grounds group manager position. And one interesting, you'll see, we don't know what we're going to call it finally right there, is that I always ask the question, "Why are we Facilities and Operations?" They said, "Well, operations doesn't have any directors." I mean, facilities doesn't have any directors, because everything is operations. So with this change, we'd also have the occasion to fold facilities into operations. So, I don't know what it'll be called, you can call me Lou. But at the end of the day, we'll make sure this is right for the next person who comes in, who looks at it and understands they want to lead in a great school district. Do you want to see the other one as well? Because I don't want to press another button. Let's see what we got here.
Anything that doesn't require a special code or a backup system, you're probably safe.
I know, I know. No unlocks came from the National Command Authority, and I don't need to put the keys in and turn keys on. Now, stop, that's a flashback. But here's the Director of Building Maintenance. And it's a little bit about these two teams. These teams are very large teams that need to have this kind of level of leadership, day and night. If you compare it to any other director in our district, they really have, probably in most cases, more budget authority and more span of control than many directors we have in the district. So, you know, as we tell our kids on their pathways, it all means something. We get to know of it. Some people are going to go down the Mike Row way, some people are going to go down the Dr. Lou way, you know? And both are very valid and both should be valued. And are there any other questions?
So, student board, these are the people who do heating, cooling, road maintenance clearance, and everything to keep schools going good. Do you guys have any questions about these positions?
So is this just a change of title, or is it like a...
Essentially, it's a change of title.
Okay.
But it's not a change of responsibility. It's a recognition of the responsibility that these individuals have had for a long time. There was an opportunity in the past where we could have made this move, and we decided not to. And we made a different, we made a different title for it. And I think this aligns things right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, have any questions?
And Director Schmidt, I saw you raise your hand, so...
Thank you. Given the tight budget, is this the time really to add to new administration positions? I mean, can we do a possible pause on this until we see where that's all, where money's all going?
For clarification, it's not adding to administration positions. These are already administration positions. And the difference in, you know, the difference in pay is negligible, really. We don't know the, we don't know the pinpoint exact amount, which Paul Anderson gave us later because we don't know what raises are and what that kind of thing would be for next year. But behind whatever their regular salary is, they already have these regularly recurring stipends. So it's not really, it's not really the budget you would think it is, and it's not adding administrators at all. I appreciate your question, though.
Superintendent Hiltz, do you have a breakdown on, as far as our administration? Because this isn't adding to it, but I think when it comes to the breakdown, we do pretty well.
I do have a breakdown, and actually, I've seen some of the national publications about, you know, skyrocketing in administrative ratios. And I'm really proud that in the 13 years I've been here, we have actually decreased our administrative ratio. One of the ways we've been able to do that is by holding and retaining people who give above and beyond. In most districts, there would be somebody probably with a title like Assistant Superintendent for Operations and Grounds or something like that. And then that person would have supervision of these two individuals. We are able to just frankly be more efficient because we have such great performance in those roles. And I wholeheartedly support this. It is, it is not, it is not no raise. There will be a raise because directors are paid at a different level. But it is absolutely respectful of the responsibility and the performance that we expect from this position. And the reason we expect it from this position is because Daniel and CJ have shown us what is possible. And so, yes, we're not promoting people, we're promoting the positions. But we're able to promote the positions with confidence because these people have shown us how valuable they are. And so I wholeheartedly stand behind this. And in the context, yes, we run very thin. Sorry, long-winded answer to a short question. Our ratio is actually lower than it has been. It's lower than it was 13 years ago. I think there have been some variations, but we have maintained an extraordinarily low administrative ratio, and we continue and will continue to do that.
Director Livia Wright?
So when we were doing that calculate, really, you're, there's no, there's no change in personnel. We're eliminating one title and creating another.
Another title, yes.
And paying more appropriately by, instead of doing, I'm guessing this was on the Prof-Tech pay scale, and then with stipends?
No, this was a...
Or was it on...
It got moved to administrator scale a while ago, when he did the group manager piece.
Okay, so it was actually, so it was on the administrative and is still on the administrative.
Right.
It's just getting, taken care of to make sure we're not doing stipending in addition so that it's actually a more clear budget item. So therefore, it's not even, so it was already classified that way as a manager position.
And it's one of those things where you'll get a great, a great presentation from Paul in a few weeks. I don't know when it is. But he eloquently puts it out there, how we are trying to get ourselves in the right lanes that we're supposed to be in. And I think we were, we were kind of a leader in this case instead of a laggard, and we got there first. But I think you'll see more, more of the same. But from a, from a top-line and bottom-line perspective, we're not, we're not doing anything that negatively impacts the district financially.
Okay, well, and it didn't, it, if it was listed as pay range administrative pay schedule before and now, then it is truly a zero-sum administrative change.
Right.
Even in terms of what little column you're putting it in the spreadsheet.
Yeah, absolutely.
Which, you know, shifts fractional things a little bit. And I'm going to indulge and just give a CJ story. Because I've known him a very long time. But the man's dedication, his wife now works in a different position. She's moved throughout the district. But when mine were little, she was the attendance secretary at Stetson. And that man was driving and finishing clearing. And the first time he'd seen his wife in 24 hours was when he finished plowing the parking lot at Stetson, and she pulled in as he left to do another school. So he's... It was amazing to just kind of, and he was like, "Well, yep, see you later, Brittany, I'm going home and going to sleep." You know, as they passed one another to do that work. And both very positive and did it without anybody ever saying, "Thank you." I think there was a time when we had a big storm and we did something, and it was overwhelming to them because no one was ever recognizing how essential they were and how much they do. And he's been doing that consistently and working through all of the pieces for well over 20 years.
Yeah, and I spent 20 years in the military in what you describe right there, we call leadership, 100%.
Director Davola?
Both of these men are very deserving of having the correct title, for sure. And I will have to say, my first few weeks on the board, I had the privilege of meeting CJ in his office and just having him show me around. And I was very impressed by his level of knowledge and his personal, personable persona and how he just welcomed me, and we were able to talk. And I was very impressed by his leadership qualities in the very few moments that I got to spend with him. So he made a big impression, for sure. I, I 100% agree and support both of these.
Yeah, rest assured, education doesn't happen without what they do.
Are there any other questions? Okay, if there are no objections, this will be moved into action at the April 10th board meeting.
I thank you very much kindly, and have a wonderful evening.
Next, we are on to 1.4, Policy and Procedure Review.
So these are just our normal updates that we get every now and then. Does anyone have any questions?
Director Schmidt?
I was a little alarmed, I was a little alarmed with the, um... The restraint one. I'm just curious if we can kind of pull that out and look at that a little bit further before we move on with it.
I believe there's two of them, are you talking about both? There's two?
And I think some of that ties in with state law. So, I don't know if Superintendent Hiltz wants to address those changes. Director Davola?
Yeah, I might, I have a clarification slash question that I think might help with this process. There was a typo that was in the restraint that I wanted to make sure everyone knew that we had, or that that had been fixed. And it's under the JKA, the first document, under restraint, the first paragraph. "If property damage may be involved, restraint may only be used when the destruction of property could possibly result in bodily harm to the individual or another person." So I had asked a question because it did say "may not." And so I believe we clarified that to be "may" instead of "may not." I don't know if that helps to clarify any questions that you had on that one. Okay, and then also, it is my understanding, because I have also been CPI trained, that's the holds training that our professionals go through in order to restrain students. I believe that state law says that we are not able to physically restrain them even if they are causing property damage, unless it is under this category that they will be showing bodily harm.
Yeah, if I may, if I, if I may speak to this, and Brad may want to improve my answer. There is a long tradition under the general umbrella of duty of care. The antithesis of that, or the inverse of that, would be negligence. And so there are situations where an adult, a responsible adult, needs to restrain a child. That child may be imminently harming others, imminently harming themselves, or the adult in that case. So we have a duty of care that involves restraint. And if we fail to restrain when restraint is appropriate, then we're negligent. But it would be completely inappropriate of us to do that randomly. So we have a policy framework, we have expert training, we have legal analysis, we have statutory guidance, and we are following all of that. The majority of these green, green line changes here are things that bring us fully into compliance with evolving statutory language or with our understanding of best practices. And so what I do not want to do is ask Dr. Lamond to come up and defend an entire policy for which she's not prepared. She is always prepared. But if there are specific questions, if the board would like to bring this back, I would ask the board to determine whether there's a majority consensus. Because if it's, if it's Director Schmidt specifically, I'm happy to talk about those things when we meet one-on-one tomorrow, Friday, excuse me. Or we could have a meeting with Dr. Lamond. But generally speaking, we have to have the policy, and the policy has to be right, and we have to train to and implement it as it's written. So that's why the dash R is also important, because that's our implementation of the policy.
Director Davola?
Yeah, if I may. I understand the legality part of this. I don't know if there's anything else that we could possibly add, maybe in a different area or a different place, of how to help students to repay or pay recompense for damages if they do have property damage involved. That would be part of showing personal responsibility and making sure that they do repay the damages that they, they occur.
If I may respond to that, the board, the board has previously adopted a policy on restorative practices. That is not a synonym for restorative justice. That has its own unique place in the discussion. But some of the restorative practices include personal acknowledgement and taking responsibility person to person. It also can include restitution, it can include financial restri... It also can include restitution, it can include financial restitution. But I'll tell you what, you spend some time scrubbing graffiti off a wall in cold temperatures, you are experiencing a natural consequence. And so, your commitment as a board to restorative practices includes restitution on a personal level, on a, on an environmental or physical level, and on a financial level. Those are all already encased in our policy.
And I'm going to just make a general comment, that with some of the green line changes, they are either statutory changes. And not only that, we have such a great safety and security team that are up to date on training. And so, if there's something else that could be looked at, I'm not in favor of pulling this out because it's bringing us into compliance, but I think it could be something that, if someone has concerns, they could address some of that. Director Livia Wright?
As an aside on the property damage, anyone over the age of 10 can be charged criminally for the property damage to schools, and sometimes when it's egregious, do get charged. And then the court makes them pay restitution to the court, which then anyone, whether it's private property or public, get restored. So, there's another layer to those pieces. And many of these green pieces, if I remember correctly, these laws, some of these laws were put into effect after there were some very specific things that did not happen here, but happened in other places in D-49, where specifically, children with special needs, who were under various types of restraint in districts who weren't implementing appropriately, were harmed. And so, state statute changed to address those problems. And that, that's what I'm reading here, because I tend to follow those pieces of law fairly carefully as a parent. So, I'm in favor of moving it forward as written to ensure that we're fully compliant and we're recognizing those additional pieces. And then, if there has to be another review of this at a later date, we can do that. But I'd rather have what we should be having legally in place in place.
Director Heil?
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back to what you were just saying, Marie, because I think you may have accidentally had a slip of the tongue, and I want to make sure we clear this up. The things that you were talking about, those events, none of them happened in D-49? Is that correct?
Correct, they were not here.
Thank you.
Director D'Vola?
And also, we do get another chance to look it over, because if we move it to the next agenda, that's another opportunity for us to have input. So, I'm in favor of moving it forward to our next meeting.
So, students, I know this might be an interesting topic you don't think about too often. Do you have any questions about this?
I do not.
I do not.
Okay, if there are no objections, this will be moved into action at the April 10th board meeting. Next up, we have Proposed Policy Revisions for A.D., School District 49 Identity, Vision, Mission, and Philosophy. And Director Schmidt, do you want to put forth the logic? This was something that was agreed to by the board at the annual planning summit, is to take a look at it. Now, one thing I have to state is that there were a couple of additions and changes made to it after the meeting was published, that would be part of the discussion. So, I don't know, Lynette, can you upload the latest? Okay. Do we need to hit refresh on ours, too? Okay. Okay. And then Director Schmidt will go, cover some of the other changes as we go through this, if you would like to make the presentation.
So, there are nine proposed revisions to Policy A.D. The first proposed revision, it's just a spelling error, I'm sure we can all agree on that. The second proposed revision is to include the long-form version of the vision statement in the policy, because it is good. I'm not sure why it wasn't in the first place, in there in the first place. The third proposed revision was originally changed from caring to supportive, but after thought, and this is where the updating it now comes in, after that, after thinking about it, the revision reads, "We will prepare students in a safe, caring, and supportive environment." That's keeping our mission statement grounded in a safe environment for students and teachers, because it's a state statute. The fourth proposed revision change, changes, changes a global society to a constitutional republic, because that is our form of government. We are a constitutional republic. Nowhere in 2232109 is the phrase "global society," which means it is not state-required policy language. Correct me if I'm wrong. The preferred language in this proposed revision is constitutional republic. The fifth proposed revision would now state that we are committed to meeting students' needs, and it includes a list of academic needs, social needs, and physical needs with definitions. So, academic needs would be students led by educators, students led by educators will take on an active role in their own learning. The achievement of significant educational outcomes will be a major goal, as well as a measure of success for each student. Some of that is the same, I just did it all in green, just for the ease of it. Social needs. Parents are predominantly responsible for a student's social well-being. However, parents can work in partnership with school staff in the social development of students. And the last one is the physical needs. D-49 will offer nutritious meals, physical activity, and an accessible and safe environment where all students can thrive. So, that's all in the fifth proposal. The sixth proposed revision states that every student has the potential to achieve excellence. I believe that by giving our teachers great materials and techniques, our students all have great potential. The seventh proposed revision states, "Responsible and productive citizens are the foundation of a constitutional republic." That replaces, I believe, democracy. This, again, is our form of government, that's why I'm asking for this change. The eighth proposed revision is, "All students can learn and want to learn. In my experience, no matter what the circumstances of life, all children, and really, people in general, gain profound pride and self-esteem in learning, and they want to be successful in school and life." And then, the ninth proposed revision says, "Individuals are responsible and accountable for their own actions," which is self-explanatory. So, those are the nine proposed revisions, and they are up for discussion, I guess, now.
Yeah, I think if we cover some of them individually, because there were other proposed comments and revisions. And so, if we start back to the-
Let's have consensus for each one, please.
Yeah, and that way, we can have consensus for each one of what goes in, what stays, what goes, and what the board comes to a consensus about. So, we're starting about the very first choice, if you could go to that?
It's just, it's spelled mistake.
Yeah. Oh, the first was the spelling correction?
I think we have consensus for-
I think we have consensus for spelling mistake.
Okay. Okay.
Let's keep on.
And the next one?
Long form?
Yep, the long form. "We endeavor to be the best choice in education by respecting the voice of our community, delivering valid path, valued pathways for students, and pursuing performance excellence." And the only comment we have there, it should be run through formal input channels before adding, and, and there was a discussion, it was a valid discussion. When some of this was originally created to include the beginnings of our cultural compass, they had town halls, they had different meetings, they had the school accountability committees and the, and the district accountability committees. We've had a couple of revisions since that time. I'm not sure if every revision went through that process, I don't believe that they did.
May I speak to that, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, please.
So, the revisions went through different kinds of processes, some things like the revision of the rocks, we had a big survey process. The revision to the compass, because this is version 2.0, we had multiple board meeting discussions, but we didn't run a survey at that time. But the point is, when you're making changes to your core commitments, it's reasonable to give people an opportunity to give input. Some of these additions, and, and the one that we're specifically discussing right now, what we call the long form of the vision, that has actually been approved by the board multiple years in a row, because it's part of our waypoints document, which is navigating the cultural compass. It's, it's already in there, and it is, it is my fault, I'll say a tiny bit tongue-in-cheek, that out of our foreign policies, I didn't make sure this one was well-aligned with the document that it hosts. The document that it hosts is actually something you're required to vote on annually, and you have. This doesn't come up very often. And so, this actually lags the document. What this, what this recommended language, the long-form vision does, is it brings the policy in line with the, with the expression of the policy. It's not, it's not just a regulation, it's actually the elaboration of this policy. And so, I will say, just from the administrator's side, we, we, we support this, as we have for multiple years. But to your broader question, public input has had a lot of looks. It's come through DAC and SAC. Student Board has weighed in, the board repeatedly has weighed in, public forum has weighed in. But we've also engaged our comms team to do surveys and town halls, and so, it, we have never lacked for input on these processes.
Director Heil?
Are we moving on to the next item yet? Because I think we already have a consensus on the long one.
All right, let's move on to the next one, then.
All right, so, I'm a proponent of, you know, anything that we make here that is substantial and meaningful should probably not just be done in one or two quick sessions with the five of us. I really feel like the, this district, you know, we can't compete financially for, for talent, for families. You know, we, we have our own special sauce that we use to give us a competitive edge, and that has two important components. So, there's the calendar, which we recently had to do some updates to, but we were very careful not to make any substantial changes. And then, our culture, which this establishes the baseline for that. So, I would strongly support any, any further meaningful changes to it being done in a more communal manner. And so, this next one up here is a good example, because, okay, we're changing from global society to constitutional republic. Now, neither one of those are incorrect. We live in a constitutional republic, and we participate in a global society. But, does that inform how our, you know, teachers are presenting the world to our students? And, and the students place in it? And is that something that we want to be giving careful consideration to, rather than just rushing through a process with the five of us?
Actually, I think in a way, it aligns with what we've discussed as far as having an American history course. And so, when you look at, are we totally changing the meaning? Well, right here, we do have something different. One of this provoked, proposed revisions is constitutional republic in the world at large, that kind of ties them together, and that's one of the changes that we're discussing right now. And so, I didn't know if anyone else has any input on that particular one? Director Schmidt?
There's a lot of reasons that globalization is good, but there's a lot of reasons that globalization is not good. You can have loss of cultural identity. So, even though you're sharing and exchanging cultures and traditions and building respect, at the same time, you can be undermining the richness of diversity and dilute local cultural identities and traditions. This can lead to cultural homogenization. Speaking for myself, I prefer not to dilute our culture and traditions with ideas from, say Sharia law, North Korea's authoritarian system, or the ethnic cleansing, as you see in Rwanda or Myanmar. There's a loss of cultural identity, and I just don't want to see that. I want to see America, stay America. There's also economic issues. Wealthier countries and corporations often benefit the most from this, and that leads to greater economic divides. There's power struggles, there's trade wars, there's ideological conflicts as nations compete for resources, influence, and security. Poorer countries, where labor laws may be weaker, can be exploited. In Bangladesh, an estimated 4 million people work in the garment industry, where the average worker earns less than, in a month than a U.S. worker earns in one day. It also contributes to environmental degradation. Industrial globalization increases pollution, deforestation, and carbon emissions. In the pursuit of global trade, corporations may chase profits with little regard for sustainability. Differences in regulations among countries can also result in pollution havens, where industries relocate to be in areas with lax environmental standards. So, there's a lot of not-so-good things about globalization, about a global society, that we should probably discuss and consider.
Director Livia Wright?
So, a global society, the way in which it's phrased isn't necessarily talking about whether globalization either. However, this is part of why I strongly suggest we take those nuances and ask our community what is most reflective of where they are, using this set of tools. And an example in the past, that isn't necessarily related to this, was the renaming of the district. And I can tell you, the majority of the board at the time thought there was nothing, and that educational philosophy statement shouldn't say Falcon School District Number 49 anymore, because we are no longer titled that and haven't been for a really long time. In fact, that was a giant, I, I remember the three officers and the majority of the board thinking it wasn't going to be a big deal. And two of us said, "Um, I bet it will be." And the two of us who said, "Oh, I bet it will be," were right. And it changed perception, and we still went down the line of saying, "What can we do differently to make it, all of these legal, different places were recorded legally the same?" And came up with something that resonated with our whole community, instead of only parts of it, having that discussion. This, to me, is very, very similar in that you could ask, "Which of these phrases is most reflective of how you would like our students to see their role and how we teach it?" Right? Because, in fact, many of the things you're talking about, that understanding requires the, addressing those things, like, understanding that when you order from Timu, you might be supporting slave child, child slave labor in another country, and did you know you were doing that? Right? So, when you ordered your $2 thing, that's $10 somewhere else, and in fact, there's a six-year-old in a sweatshop making it somewhere. Did you know that? You don't know that if you're not educated about the global society, and you're only educated about what's happening in the United States. I don't know what happens in those pieces, but that's why things in mission statements matter and why we should be asking. And so, to me, rather than five of us saying, "This is what we think is most reflective of where the five of us are coming from," say, "We are looking at this phrase in our mission statement. Here are five different versions, and do you suggest another version?" And see what kind of feedback you get, because sometimes the feedback you get is better than anything the five of us could come up with, and addresses the same concern, addresses the concern that Director Schmidt is bringing up. So, that's my perspective, and that's my perspective, honestly, on quite a few of these things, is that because language matters, let's ask.
So, I, what's really important to note is it does say that, "By learning, working, and leading, we will prepare students," and then I'm going to skip a few things, "to be successful, competent, and productive citizens in," and then we had a global society. Well, in order to be considered citizens, that means you're a citizen of a country, and that country is the United States of America, which is a constitutional republic. So, if we're going to have, and that has already been pre-approved, is that citizens' peace. What's extremely important is to, to note that, in order for us to be productive citizens, we have to know we live in a constitutional republic. And to Deb, or to Director Schmidt's point, our economy is different, how we run our elections is different. We took valuable things from our founding fathers in order for us to create a society that has not been matched in the entire world. And so, we are very proud of that, and we had that at our last discussion of the reasons why we wanted U.S. history, history to be a required course, because our citizens need to know who, who we are, where we've come from, in order for us to continue this great, great nation and not lose our society as a whole. And so, I actually would propose, instead of saying "in-" And so I actually would propose, instead of saying "in a constitutional republic," we would change it to "of a constitutional republic," because citizens of a constitutional republic instead of just being in one.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Point of privilege, please. We've just been remarkably successful in winning on a summary judgment motion in a case having to do with the limited public forum that we are. And I'm going to ask you to ask the audience, not to verbally or audibly respond as you guys are interacting here tonight. We need to be consistent in our practice.
Okay, so that's what we're talking about right now, which is a separate case right now as far as limited public participation, which I understand, just to keep the meeting flowing and to avoid reactions for now, that would be most appreciated. You know, one thing I have to say is I think there's a way to marry these two things together because we are a constitutional republic with representative government. And I think omitting that from, once again, tying in with citizen is an omission. And I think you can tie it together because I do believe that not only has America had a great role throughout our history with global issues, we are not independent of ourselves. I was a little bit saddened where I had one person say that the phrase "constitutional republic" was a dog whistle. No, it's a system of government. And if you ever read the book Five Thousand Year Leap, you'll see that it's kind of a remarkable form of running a country. So likewise, we are interdependent on other countries for goods and materials. We have trades, there's a lot of discussion going on right now about different trade wars or tariffs. We are interdependent, and I recommend if you get a chance to look over either the YouTube clip or a little short reading summary called "I Pencil." And it shows all the materials that are needed to make a pencil, and how they come from different countries and how they come together to that bright Number Two pencil that has, are they still using those for tests? But if you get a chance, check into "I Pencil." And so I think that America, we've had our flaws, like every country throughout our history, but for the most part, we have been a force for good throughout the world. So my proposal would be is that we find a way to tie them together, but I don't think you have just one or the other, that you just talk about a global society and you fail to mention where we're at. We have exchange students, and they come here to learn about the United States of America. If they're from Japan, they don't come here to learn about Japanese culture, they know all about it. And so when we have exchange students or students who are here from another country, I think it's important for them to understand what it is. So I would like to find a way to marry those two phrases together, that we are citizens of a constitutional republic, but we have a place in the world. Director Schmidt? I'm sorry, Superintendent Hiltz?
Since we've been through one round, may I make one quick observation? I would ask you, as a Board, please be considerate of what a mission statement is. It's intended to be a short, punchy, we could laden this up by saying, "Learning, working, leading, and collaborating," because collaborating is really important. And we will prepare students in a safe, caring, and joyful, and so we could layer more on. This language was at the top of every agenda for a dozen years. I just went back and looked at one from September of 2013, when I had first joined the district. It didn't yet say "learn, work, and lead," but it said everything else, including a global society. Here's my recommendation, and it will offend proponents and opponents equally. I think we ought to put a period after the word "citizens." And here's why. Danielle's a citizen of the Falcon community, of El Paso County, of a home rule school district, and of the state of Colorado. None of those are constitutional republics. All that citizenship really matters. And so I would suggest there's a way that will be, it doesn't make the political point or the cultural point in either direction, but it focuses on what we need from our students, which is, in whatever entity you are a citizen of, be a really good one, which is kind of an Abraham Lincolnal sort of expression. Whatever you are, be a good one.
I would also suggest we ask the students. We've gone through one round, but we haven't, on any of the edits, we haven't asked the students yet what they think.
Actually, I was going that direction. Maren, is there anything you'd like to add to this one?
I think when, I think, like, reading it and like, listening to your guys' comments, I think Mr. Hiltz's comment was probably the best. It keeps it general without going into specifics, but it also is like, it stays inclusive and we're not specifying who or what they have to be. So I think putting a period at "citizens" is perfectly fine as a mission statement for a school district.
Danielle?
I'm on the same boat with Maren on that, and I also agree with, I forgot your name, but I agree with you about how you should add "of," wait, in a global, we know, "of a constitutional republic," because that is who we are as Americans. And I feel like on the same boat, what you guys were talking about, how it is very important to educate them on American history too, because that is who we are as a nation, and we could use world history to help educate them on, like, labor industries and stuff like that.
Director Schmidt?
I would just put forth that the community has already spoken, because they voted a sin. We speak for them.
Director Heil?
Yeah, I want to endorse Superintendent Hiltz's solution. I think it's the simplest, it's the most elegant, it keeps us, you know, neutral politically, and that's probably where we should be.
Director D'Vola?
I wasn't aware that saying we're a constitutional republic was political, but I would go ahead and I personally would move this forward for action at our next meeting with the change of "of" or "in" to "of a constitutional republic," period.
Director Livia Wright?
If I had to pick between the three, I'm picking Peter's version. But again, it doesn't take that much to ask, and yes, I was elected. I've been elected in contested elections three times, and I've not once presumed that I automatically knew that the people who voted for me knew what I thought about every single piece of this. And even when I thought I knew, I'd rather be gut-checked, because I'd rather take longer and make sure it's truly reflective of our whole community than simply the circle I live in, because we each live in our own circle, and we hear the voices within our circle, but that, those circles aren't our whole community. And I think we do better when we ensure that we're listening. And if the feedback overwhelmingly comes that it's "of a constitutional republic," period, and we're not interested in any other pieces, then you know what? That's the community's feedback, and I say, "Okay." Not what I would have thought, but okay, and I move forward. I would hope that others would be as open to hearing that, and not just through open forum and email, because we all know, we hear the same voices, and they're the same restricted groups. They're not really expansive enough of our whole community.
You know, one comment I would like to make, it's a conversation that I have had with Director Heil, it's a conversation I have had with Director Schmidt, because we hear the word constituents. And I have to tell you this, that the constituents are the people who voted for you and the people who didn't vote for you. In Falcon District 49, we have director districts, but that doesn't mean we only own this little area. That was something that was set in place by the voters on a three-to-one basis to split into director districts, okay? But that doesn't mean that I only represent my director district and the people who voted for me. I've talked to a couple of people who actually did not vote for me, and we've been able to reach an understanding on several things over time. I represent the Falcon District, I represent the Sand Creek District, I represent the Power Zone, the I Connect Zone, I represent districts I do not live in. And so I will get that input and listen to other voices, and I think it's really important for everyone to listen to other voices that are voices you don't normally hear from. And at the same point, we have to reach a decision because we are elected representatives. One of the reasons why I wasn't really in favor of going through the whole process again is because we're not rebuilding it, we're changing words. And ideas and attitudes can adjust. I heard some surveys the other day that showed, over the past 20 years, younger people have shifted away from spreading democracy around the globe or nation-building, that there is less support, let's say, for NATO or for the United Nations. Times do change, and so I think to look at some of this, I think some people think a constitutional republic is a dog whistle, some people think the word "global" is tying into globalization and that that's a dog whistle, and the only dog whistle I've ever used is one to train a dog. So I think that we have to discuss words, we have to have debate, because that's how this country was formed. And so are there any other comments before we decide whether or not to move this one forward? Okay, so is this one that we want to move forward?
You're going to have to clarify the change.
Oh, yes. And then, so are we staying, are we ending with a constitutional republic? Are we going to end with citizens? So I'd like to hear from each director on that portion.
Of a constitutional republic.
Citizens.
Again, I think you should ask, but citizens, because asking doesn't mean going through town halls. It means asking the communications department to do a couple of surveys of various stakeholder groups, and you'd have, you could have the feedback by your next work session. And empower your community and make them feel heard at the same time, which is what that whole, like, when we talk about sustaining enduring trust, that's how we did it in the past, and that would move in that direction. But if I have to pick between the two, it's citizens, period.
Director D'Vola?
Constitutional republic.
I have another question I'd like to ask the Board, is if there are areas where we don't have a strong consensus, if you are open to the idea of surveys or not? Now, I am going to tell you that, right now, my answer would be citizens in a constitutional republic, because that's what we are. So right now, we have kind of a three-two situation with citizens. So my only question is, is the Board open to having that go out as a survey question to various groups within our communities?
Yes.
We would need to make sure we have parameters over who that survey would go out to.
No input here from?
Mr. Hiltz.
Mr. Hiltz, as far as?
Typically, for this kind of a survey, we're relatively open-ended. We post it on our social media and web presence platforms, and then we don't make any specific attempt to vet or take identity. This, so we could gather public input on this. We have other entities, like our school and district accountability committees, that could weigh in, our student board, and this isn't urgent. We've been a long time with this, and I will, I'll lead enthusiastically in whichever of these constructions go forward. By the way, below, I would strongly support the shift from a democratic society to a constitutional republic under the educational philosophy section. I'm more, you guys know me, I'm a simpleton or a simplifier, and that's why we have a vision and mission statement that are three words long, because sometimes you need to be able to communicate quickly and concisely. And if your mission statement is provoking disagreement, that's a problem. And so that's what's motivating me, not because I oppose her, it's because I'm the one that uses that thing all the time. I use it when I hire, I use it when we onboard, and so I just, I want to make sure that it does for us what a mission statement needs to do for us, which is, which is less than 30-second elevator discussion of what we are. And this is a, it is taking a position, and it is absolutely the Board's prerogative to take that position. I would agree, just grammatically, I think of, you are citizens of a republic, not just citizens in a constitutional republic. So if we move that forward, and I would apply that language to whatever, the 13th bullet, I think, in the list down below. But we can run a public input process pretty rapidly. What we can't do is say, well, we have to prove that you're a district parent or a district student or a district. That would be another order of magnitude.
Yeah, that can pose its own issues. So I just have one proposal to run past the Board real quick so we can move forward. If we were to end citizens with a period, and then down below, keep the change that says responsible and productive citizens are the foundations of a constitutional republic, that would help balance out some of the concerns. So that's a proposal. I'd just like to hear what you think of. And we'll even go back to the students to say what they think. Maren?
I think the idea of a survey is good. Getting as much opinion as you can from the community is always a good option, as well as maybe what Mr. Hiltz was saying, bring this back to the student board, because ultimately the students are who matters here. So I think if we talk to them about it at our next meeting, that would be good input for you guys to receive as Board members when considering what to proceed with in this length.
Danielle?
I think a survey too, and bringing it to the student board too.
Director Schmidt?
If we're going to do a survey, we need to have adult members as well.
And I don't disagree that it should be SACs, DACs. It should be people who are actually involved with the district if we go that direction. Director Livia Wright?
Well, and that in part is part of the point of the survey, so if we did it in the manner Peter is discussing, similar to the way we do the weather ones, right? And I guarantee you, there are people who do not have children in our district who also comment on those, and they check the boxes off, and you can see it on the comments. But we have a set of tools communications is great at doing, and they can have the person self-classify, check all that apply. Are you a parent, an employee, a resident, whatever? And it's self-reporting, so can some people lie? Yes. Do the majority of people lie when they check those boxes off? No. So will it give you a temperature of where people are who are interested enough to be following it? Yes. So there's that piece. And then, student board of reps, the DAC. And if Peter, can I, if there's any place else we should be kind of like?
SCLAC would be perfect.
Throwing it in and saying, "Hey, you know, just give us your feedback on this." Ultimately, as a Board, you can choose to completely ignore the feedback too, don't recommend it, but having watched what happens when you choose to ignore it, it is not fun. But I think that that's a smart thing to do on something like this, and it really doesn't, it doesn't take months or years, you're talking about a few weeks. But you can certainly make sure that anybody who's interested, if they're following our district, does, which means taxpayers of all ages have a way to weigh in.
Director D'Vola? I know, I was trying to go back.
And how do taxpayers of all ages know about how to go, know to go to the website? I mean, how do they know about it? I mean, it seems to me like it would be a little bit uneven, because you're not getting just taxpayers also, you know what I'm saying? I get getting the student board, I get getting the DAC and the SAC, but those taxpayers out there that are paying for all this, how do you get them to see this to make a vote?
I think that has to be, I think our communications department actually does a pretty good job with outreach. They actually, you know, mail the magazine out to residents of this community, and it's been my experience that people talk among one another. And so I think that that would be a way to see what comes through. Another thing I think you would see is if you see a vast disparity between what's on the website and what comes in from the student board, the SACs and the DACs, I think that can also inform you of a direction to go. So my question is, with the rest of this, because this is taking an extra amount of time, so I'm going to kind of tighten up some other areas, is do you want to move forward with the surveys and bring this back to another work session, because it is the mission statement for the district? So this is going to be yes or no. We'll get input on the surveys. I'd like to hear from each Board member on microphone.
So the proposal is to essentially engage the community, correct?
Yes.
Director Livia Wright?
Yes.
Director D'Vola?
Yes.
I'm going to be a yes, and so Director Schmidt?
Then you have a consensus.
Okay, that's good, so.
May I invite a tasking that you direct me to facilitate a survey, and I'll just kind of publicly say, "We'll draft a survey," and then what I'd like to do is run it by the Board, so that you understand we're not, you know, kind of skewing it. I think we would pull out some specific things, like the mission statement, that could be a single item. That could be a single item. But we would probably invite comment on all of these proposed changes. We would post it to our social media and web platforms. We can email it to anyone for whom we have an address. And to Director Schmidt's point, we do, our, our, all of our surveys, all of our listening activities do tend to draw people who are engaged with the district. If people are disengaged from the district, I don't know how to combat that. But if they're paying attention and they, they're even seeing what the agendas are, and they're, they're glancing at our Facebook where we have 17,000 followers, I think. It, it, it would be almost intentional to not be aware of it, if it's happening. And we've gotten many thousands of, of feedback items when we've done things like this in the past.
Random suggestion, so, so those of you who are in the close to AARP range, which I am only a couple of years from as well myself, who belong in various Facebook groups, if you take the survey, if you take the 49 stuff and share it on your page, all of your friends on Facebook see it. And you've just reached a group of people the district might not have. I know things like that get reshared on Falcon Community Forum and Meridian Ranch, and Meridian Ranch Woodman Hills No Rules, and Meridian Ranch Woodman Hills that still has rules, and all the other random ones that exist in my part of the community. So that's another way to reach more people, is if you're interested in making sure more people see it, share it on your feeds, because those folks are following the same things you want.
And I think it's good to encourage people who actually live in our district, or who have students who attend school here. So as to the tasking, what he said, so. Are we in consensus with that? Okay. All right, now we are on to pair, 1.6, the resolution for safety in private spaces. And this is one I kind of wanted to cover with some information, if you can bear with me here. We've received a lot of email, both pro and con on this one. And there has been some misunderstandings. So I'm going to start, if Vice President DeVola could read the resolution, and then I want to make some comments before we get into discussions.
Point of order, so we're not going to discuss any of the other changes? I'm kind of confused.
I didn't know. I thought we're going to gather the survey information. So I think he was going to put it together on all of the proposed changes. Am I correct, Superintendent Hiltz, that's what you had in mind?
That was the tasking I invited.
Okay.
And then, my intent was to bring it back in front of the board before it goes out.
Director DeVola, do you want to read the resolution real quick as we go on to 1.6?
Whereas District 49 in El Paso County, Colorado prioritizes student safety and equality as embodied in the purposes and language of Title IX. And whereas the Board of Education believes that there is a clear distinction between sex, which is the biological design at birth, differentiating between male and female, and gender expression and gender identity, which have been designated by, for example, Colorado HB 21-1108. And whereas the President of the United States, on January 20th, 2025, signed executive order defending women from gender ideology extremism and restoring biological truth to the federal government, declaring that it is the policy of the United States to recognize two sexes, male and female. And whereas the aforementioned executive order further states, federal funds shall not be used to promote gender ideology, which puts at risk federal funding to the district should its policy or practice fail to recognize and honor biological sex. And whereas the President of the United States, on January 29th, 2025, signed executive order ending radical indoctrination in K-12 schooling, declaring the federal intent to eliminate federal funding for K-12 curriculum, instruction, programs, or activities in schools, which even indirectly support the advancement of gender ideology or social transition of students. And whereas, the board represents students and staff's rights to personal physical privacy and personal security in restrooms and locker rooms, and their right to fair competition in sporting events. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of District 49, the board in ensuring the full instructional environment respects the distinctions between the two sexes, authorizes and directs the superintendent. One, we're legally appropriate to update any relevant administrative policy, procedures, and facility agreements and usage guidelines to be consistent with the knowledge that there are only two sexes, males and females, and consistent with the right to personal physical privacy and personal security in restrooms and locker rooms, and consistent with the right to fair competition in sporting events. Two, unless specifically compelled by the state to ensure restrooms and locker rooms separate males and females. And three, to take all available legal steps to ensure males are not competing as females in sporting events.
What I would like to address with a lot of these, because based on some of the emails that we've received, that a lot of people interpret words or what they're reading in different ways. And modesty has always been a big issue for many students when it comes to private spaces, regardless of biological attributes or self-identification. Parents, guardians, and community members have also expressed concerns when it comes to shared spaces. For sports that are not specifically coed, which many sports are, there have been both anecdotal and verified reports from around the country of sports injuries when biological males compete against females. Currently, there have been rapid developments when it comes to the issues of federal funding, when it comes to education curricula and sports funding, that we must be cognizant of. We have a fiduciary obligation to pay attention to funding public education to the best of our ability. Children who identify as transgender at much higher risk of bullying and injury. We want to protect all students. There are community members who have religious objections or conscious concerns about mixed biological genders in private areas in sports. Under the First Amendment of the Constitution, we must hear those concerns as well. D-49 has a history of valuing families of all persuasions, beliefs, and opinions. We value parental choice. Our big rock of value all people is the bedrock of our commitment to do just that, to include listening to people who may have a different viewpoint. Chassa has failed to take a stance on this. We are not sure how executive orders will or will not impact funding in our school districts. There are constitutional arguments that will be made. I think a lot of people will look at the 10th Amendment to the Constitution. To paraphrase, areas not designated to the federal government are reserved by the states. You also have the 14th Amendment to the Constitution, which has been upheld multiple times to affirm that parents have the right to uphold the education and the upbringing of their children. When we passed our Parents' Bill of Rights and Responsibilities, nowhere in there did we put a phrase that said, "But only for the parents that we agree with." That language does not exist. And so I admire parents who advocate for their children, no matter what their opinion is. And so there are a lot of different areas here. And we're kind of caught in the crossfire, because earlier I mentioned that we do a lot with a little when it comes to funding. So those are areas we're going to have to look at. Now, as a board, multiple times we've been told, if you get this money, you must do this. We get requirements from the state of Colorado. We have gotten federal requirements with federal funds that we had to uphold. People have called them strings to federal funding. And the truth of the matter is, some of those strings are going to be changing. And so it's an ever-developing situation. And I admire people of good conscience who have different opinions on this issue. I personally can tell you that I think the design of the future is going to be a lot of private spaces. More privacy for our students. And I'll tell you the truth, I've been in favor of that since the late 70s, because I felt awkward in locker rooms. I felt awkward with private spaces. And so, anyone who thinks that this is intended to be an attack against anyone really needs to look at where boards are going to be put in a position. So I value a lot of different opinions on this, and I value privacy. And I want to see every one of our students heard and kept safe. And that's our kids, no matter what their opinion is, I want them to be heard and I want them to be safe. And likewise, I want to hear from people with different viewpoints. So I just wanted to get that out of the way before we start a discussion on this one. Does anyone have any questions about this resolution or comments? Director Heil?
So looking at the first executive order mentioned, referring to biological truth, it defines female as belonging to the sex that produces the large reproductive cell, and male as belonging to the sex that produces the small reproductive cell. So each one of you has received a collection of four medical studies, which I will attach to our next agenda so the public can see them, covering five patients with a condition called Sawyer syndrome. They produce no reproductive cells, so what sex are they? They are all chromosomally coded XY, so are they male? Physically, they present as underdeveloped female. And with normal female infertility treatments, were able to carry a successful pregnancy to term. So are they female? This is just one of the many natural human variations that have doomed every attempt to apply a universal scientific definition to sex, to failure. Given these facts, the only correct use of the term gender ideology is in reference to the position that insists on a binary model that has long since failed the test of evidence. We are in the business of education, and science is one of our core subjects. We undermine our primary mission when we adopt policies that are contrary to well-developed science. This resolution acknowledges legal restrictions to what can be done. And we should already be aware that the goals expressed here are in conflict with multiple state statutes. With no clear path forward, this feels performative and unnecessary. I should have been giving, been giving my attention this week to the 144-page comprehensive financial report we briefly discussed. Instead, we're dealing with what looks to me to be just a distraction. We noted on our board evaluations that we were downgraded.
Director Heil, I forgot to get the timer going. We're going to do a two-minute for people's comments.
I'm in my last sentence.
Okay, great.
We noted on our board evaluations that we were downgraded on value all people. This is a perfect example of why.
And I would like to be clear that we are not going to be doing genetic or chromosomal testing of any student. Director Schmidt, were you going to say, two minutes on the call?
Wow, there's a lot here, isn't there? You know, one set of comments that the board received was supportive of the district honoring transgender students. I shouldn't say transgender, I guess it's identifying, sorry. By allowing them to, into private spaces that have always been designated according to biological sex. The other set of comments were supportive of those traditional private spaces remaining as they have always been, designated according to biological sex. The deal is that if the district fails to recognize and honor biological sex, we are put at risk of losing federal funding. And I really don't think President Trump is kidding around when he says that. I believe that we can put our heads together and figure out a way to honor both without sharing private spaces.
Director Laverre Wright?
So I have eight questions, and they're actually for Peter and Brad. So I'm going to read all eight of them, because I started the timer. And then y'all can take as long as you need to answer them. So here they are. One, when was Mathis decided? And can you explain what that decision mandated for schools in Colorado? Two, has District 49 been in compliance with Mathis since that decision? Three, what process has D-49 followed to be in compliance? Four, what other state statutes and regulations related to this issue are we legally bound to follow? Five, legally, which takes precedence, executive orders or the Mathis decision in state statute and regulation? Six, the resolution states, and I forget the exact word now, where legally, and I read it wrong the first time, allowed or permissible, it's not permissible, but it's the legal directive. How does that change what we are doing, dig doing, we're legally appropriate? Given those first five questions, how does this resolution change what we're doing? Seven, the resolution speaks to contract language changes. What contracts do we currently write that include any of that language? And eight, can you describe the types or categories of discipline issues and/or incidents that occur on our campuses in bathrooms and locker rooms? How does this address any of what's actually occurring in those spaces that we have to apply discipline to?
Thank you. Which one of you wants to start?
Brad Miller here. Great questions, Marie, thank you. And, and I took, you know, hectic notes, I didn't get it all. So I will tell you that the Mathis case, which arose locally in the south part of Colorado Springs, was maybe a decade or more ago. It was through the Office of Civil Rights, or the, I think more properly, the Colorado Civil Rights Division. It was not a federal case in that sense, and it was resolved at that level. It, and I really can't go into the details. I remember it, you know, and I know we've looked at it here briefly tonight, but I can't give you much detail, and I can follow up with the board on that. In terms of the, the state laws that are applicable, predominantly, there's one-sided here, which is House Bill 211108, which is the, sort of the exemplar of the definitionally saying that the state is going to protect the rights of individuals in respect to their gender identity and gender expression, both of which are defined terms within that statute. And it's, it's been a little bit of a, an open question in some respects because of the potential that US Supreme Court jurisprudence stands for a proposition that the parents have a role in that decision for children under the age of 18. And that is a question that isn't fully litigated. But, but I know that this board has engaged with that thought processes. You know, is that a parent role or is it a student role? But assuming that it's agency to an individual, that law is pretty explicit about the right to be protected from discrimination on the basis of those categories. In terms of compliance, I was looking at bullet two down here. And, and one of you did describe, I think it was, it was Lori, described the idea of, of privacy and modesty in the sense that one way that we could comply as a district with this bullet, for the most part, is to ensure that every student has individualized privacy, right? So there are ways that this could be enacted to some degree, even now. And then, you asked this question, Marie, about, something about contracts. And I, I didn't catch up with you on that one.
Somewhere at some point, it talks about changing contract language. Maybe that disappeared in a newer one, because the original one I read talked about referring to the con, any type of contract we had, when, so it sounded like contractually when we deal with outside organizations. Maybe that piece is not where I saw it anymore, because I read it several days ago.
There's no hits on a search for the word contract.
Okay, because I thought I saw that piece at some point.
And I don't believe that this is revised since it was first introduced to the website. So I don't know what you're talking about.
All right, so then somehow I convoluted the piece when I read it.
Other than that, just to be, you know, candid as possible, I appreciate that the language here says, "We're legally appropriate, unless compelled by the state," et cetera. It's, it's in effect aspirational and kind of in anticipation of what may follow from these executive orders, which, to be clear, are not law. And, and to the extent that the second executive order had to do with privacy in federal buildings or for federal employees, that might apply to our local post office, but it doesn't apply yet to the schools. So many of these things would be affected by administration in the event that federal funding was connected directly to something, or if there was a congressional action that, that put these into law.
Director DeVola?
Not all of them were answered. Peter hasn't gone through, how did we implement Mathis? How did we, right, so, because Mathis actually explicitly was about bathroom access of a six-year-old and down by fountain. And I was on the board when we did it, yeah, so, but.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
But I know our district has had policies and practices in place that have been supportive of students. We had something we were doing. So are we, can we not talk about what we've been doing?
We are in fact complying with law, Marie, with the caveat that with respect to... We are, in fact, complying with law, Marie, with the caveat that with respect to gender expression and gender identity, we do include parents for the most part. There's cases of—you know, there'd be cases of students who are not with their parents, or that there's reasons to have other concerns, but for the most part, we include parents in the thoughtful dialogue around those decisions, and they're made in a manner that is respectful, but ultimately always respects the right of students to have that sort of access. So that's the approach that we've taken, and would continue even under this resolution.
Kind of the pieces I'm asking for the two of you to elaborate, because I don't know that the majority of our community knows how this has been handled over the last decade, which, from direct knowledge of folks I know, has been handled in a manner that built relationship and was respectful and trusting, and like all kinds of pieces. We did it right, which is why we haven't had people showing up and blowing up. And those are the pieces that I kind of need you guys to elaborate on so that everybody gets that piece. That's what I was looking for.
If you don't mind, I'll just go a bit further. The last two summers, since the passage of 1108, so maybe it's the past three summers, I've been invited to the leadership launch, which involves most of our building leaders at, you know, multiple levels of building leadership. And we have an open dialogue about the rights and the responsibilities, and when to be cautious about including a parent who, for some reason, we need to think about differently in terms of the way they might interact with the student's choice and so forth. But we also are very respectful in making sure that every leader has a first instinct to go to the parents, work it through with them, get their consent if possible, and then develop a plan. Because oftentimes, a student who's in transition of whatever—and I'm not going to use proper terminology perhaps—but thinking through their gender identity or gender expression, there's—oftentimes, students aren't ambitious to fully go down the road of maybe going to the opposite-sex bathroom, for example. And so we can put in place options for using staff bathrooms and having other respectful approaches to those things. And this is all done in dialogue, and it's done in a way that's remarkable, frankly.
That's part of the point I wanted to have come across.
Yeah. I'll speak to a couple of other things, if I may, that are responsive to that set of questions. In the same way that I wouldn't have asked Dr. Lamond to respond to all those, I'm not prepared to respond to all of those in depth, but Marie and I met earlier this week, we had some conversation about this. She knows some of what I know. When I read number one of the resolution, "where legally appropriate," that tells me that I need to know what the law says. And Colorado is unique in that we have a constitutional provision, we have statute, and we have case law that give me strong guidance. They let me know. And I would expect that the board would not permit me to put the district in clear legal peril haphazardly or irresponsibly. And so, as an example, I believe part of this resolution means that our bathrooms should be labeled "boys and girls." And I believe that then students should use the bathrooms consistent with the law, which right now, this is the Mathis decision, right now, an individual, regardless of their biology, who identifies with a female gender would use the girls, and that's the law. So what you're telling me in this resolution as your superintendent is, follow that law. That doesn't really change much of what we have been practicing. Where we have not had an explicit practice, and where I take more direction from the board, is item three, which is to take all the available legal steps to ensure males are not competing as females in sporting events. Each of you individually, and several members of our community, have heard me say, it is the board's prerogative to pick the fight. If this is a fight you want to pick, I am your superintendent, I will fight this, I think this is a fight worth picking, I would prefer to see Chassa take a position on this—I understand that they have not—but this is a case where Colorado does not have case law, does not explicitly have statute, and only what we can infer from the Colorado Constitution. So we would be helping develop precedent were we to focus on item three. And why that matters is, related to our earlier conversation, we live in a constitutional republic, which has as one of its core political science tenets, the idea of federalism, which is that the states have broad discretion over setting their own standards so that people can choose to or not to live in them. And an executive order doesn't have the force of case law, constitution, and statute. And so I have to be sensitive to that as well, but it is also the board's prerogative. If you want to be—if you want this to be the place where you take a stand, it's the board's prerogative to take a position that invites a legal reading, or that invites a potentially a statutory change. I would predict in Colorado that both or either of those things would follow on pretty quickly, and it's my job to report that to you, because that's part of why I go to these legal conferences, go to case, is to get a sense and take the temperature of the state. So, I know that's not responsible to all eight of them, but it gives you a sense of how I would have to turn around and administer the guidance that you're providing in bullet points one, two, three.
I will—I'm sorry, Marie. I will add that Director Heil's comment that this is performative is not inaccurate, but I think that there potentially is a value for those who are supportive of this, that it could signal to organizations like Chassa and like the legislature, and potentially to other districts, of a stance and a perspective, and that can signal change, and I've seen that happen. Certainly, I have a relative in the legislature, and getting emails and things of that nature are influential. And just as it has been worthy of note to you that you've gotten several emails on this topic, in the same way, this board adopting a resolution of this nature—there's three television cameras in here, there's things going on, this is going to catch someone's attention, and that might have value.
Director DeVola?
Yes, I actually have a suggestion for a change to the resolution on the second whereas—it says, "whereas the Board of Education believes that there is a clear distinction." I would propose that we change the word "believes" to "acknowledges." I think there's a good difference in there. And then also, on Peter's point with number two, of "unless specifically compelled by the state"—well, it does sound like the state is compelling us to allow biological males who identify as female or otherwise to be able to use those bathrooms. Is that correct?
The state, the current legal construct, compels us to honor the preference of an individual student to use the facilities that—and this would be bathrooms or locker rooms—that align with their expressed gender identity. That's—that is the current compulsion from the state.
Okay, and then it is my understanding that as a district, we have worked hard to have those as an adult restroom that that child uses. Is that correct? Or are we allowing them to choose?
To Brad's point, we've been—it's been highly individualized, and it has begun from a place of care and respect. It has not begun from—it has begun from a place of care and respect. And the younger the child, the more the parent has been involved. And I need to elaborate this a little bit further. There are boys who are completely uncomfortable going to the boys' bathroom or the boys' locker room, and we care and respect and are sensitive about that. And that is exactly true for girls going to the—this isn't as much of an issue about crossing the streams of gender, sex, and expression as it is about caring for individual children in the context of their family system, their school, their development. And I think what I am most proud of is that we have always been care-forward, respect-forward, parent involvement forward. That is our history. That's our legacy, and it has served us very well, including some issues where we've gotten national attention. We've got commendations from organizations that represent very different perspectives on these topics, not because our policy was always perfect, but because we were care-forward, student-forward. And so, I appreciate that there seems to remain opportunities to be very care-forward. I especially appreciate the expectation of the board that we partner with parents.
Okay, well, with that explanation, I would also propose that we take out "unless specifically and compelled by the state," and put in just "ensure restrooms and locker rooms separate males and females as defined by biological sex." Thank you.
The one thing I want also to let people know that when there have been—we have procedures that we have followed—I have never once asked which restroom a student uses. I've never sought out that information. And one thing I'm really proud of with this district is that this district honors parental choice and involves the parents. And I hope we always remain that way, because it's important. Are there any other comments? Maren, did you want to have any comments on this one?
I guess my question—I don't really know who it's directed towards—but is this resolution somewhat preemptive, like—or is it like Mr. Hiltz was saying, like individualized, per student, per situation? Like, is there a reason for this resolution to be adopted?
You know, it's kind of—I'm glad you asked that question. It's a very good question, and some of it is preemptive, because we don't know what's going to happen with federal funding. We don't know what's going to come down the pipeline as far as federal funding and the various streams that will be attached to that federal funding. Also, I have been in discussions with starting a petition—a petition to Chassa—to have them take a position. International Track and Field has taken a position, and so there are other groups that have not taken a position. And so we're kind of left in the wind right now. We've had a threat from one community member to report us to some website, and so it's really difficult to know the way forward, because there will be a clear conflict between federal executive orders, state laws, what could come down with strings for funding, and that's part of the joy of what a school board gets to navigate. There used to be a time when school boards got to decide how to fund a baseball diamond, and the world has changed a lot since that time. And so there's a couple of tricky areas that we have to get through, and the purpose of it was, once again, to be preemptive, because we don't have a lot of leeway when it comes to our financial situation in District 49. And we want to respect families of different belief systems. Most importantly, we want to respect the privacy of our students and how they feel about it as well. So, Director Schmidt?
And by the way, I apologize real quick for the second round, because we are running a little bit over. We're going to leave the second round to one-minute comments, if everyone can be brief.
One of the comments in one of the emails that we received mentioned that some of the children that identify are uncomfortable undressing around others. So respecting that privacy, as well as protecting the privacy of a cisgendered person, I think is a concern. We need to, again, put our heads together and figure out a way to honor both—I don't want to say sides, but both sides. Honor them respectfully, give them their privacy, everyone.
Director Heil?
So I want to point out that I do hear and understand and respect some of the concerns of some of the folks who are in favor of this resolution. And although they may be valid concerns, I don't think that they are being realized here in this district. And I heard Peter and Brad sort of affirming some of the suspicions I had, but I'm really disappointed that this came forward during spring break, when I could have spoken to some of our building leaders and confirmed these suspicions. But I suspect we're talking about a very small number of students. I suspect their situations are being managed one-on-one basis with the involvement of the parents. I suspect transgender students are not in the locker rooms and are intentionally avoiding those situations, so they find other solutions. And I suspect that we have zero transgender children involved in sports.
Director Livia Wright?
I don't know that we'd have any way of knowing if the person transitioned before they came to our school. So we—there's lots of things we can't track. And my entire issue is, our district has worked out the right way to do this, in compliance with state law, without indoctrinating anyone, and it's worked beautifully for the decade that Mathis has been in place, and that's fairly evident by the fact that you haven't been hearing about it at open forum for 10 years, because of the deep level of respect and care, and the level of conversation and relationship our administrators build with families on anyone's concern, including a cisgender kid who says, "I don't want to change in that locker room, because I'm worried about X, Y, or Z." We care about each individual kid and approach them in that individual way, and so specifying something that essentially implies something to our community that's also not true. This implies like that until now, we weren't doing any of this. Guess what? Your child may very well have been in a bathroom with a transgender kid, and they ever would have known. And that's been true for a decade in the entire state of Colorado. And we are compelled by the state to do it, and the state provides more funding than the feds do. So, there's whole pieces of this that I see issue with, because I think it's calling out something that didn't need to be called out at this time.
Director DeVola?
Can I call for consensus on changing the word "believes" to "acknowledges?"
Yes.
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 Awesome, that's it.
Okay, so right now, we have had at least one change to this, and I do have a proposal to get more input, is what I would like to do is, instead of asking—which I could ask for—if I say, "if there are no objections, this will be moved into action to the next April 10 meeting," I believe there will be objections. What I'd like to do is, I would like to get more information on this and move it to our next work session, to include legal advice, direction from our superintendent. And so, if I can get a consensus that this will be moved to the next work session and not necessarily onto action for the April 10 meeting.
Director Thompson?
Director DeVola?
Director Thompson? There was a proposed revision that would have legal implications. To the extent that we want to consider those things, I would ask that we might need to consider an executive session for that sort of thing. And separately, since this is not a policy, we don't have to do the sort of serial reads, so you could actually come up with two versions at a future meeting and then decide between them there, so to give you a little bit of latitude.
And I think it's a wonderful idea to have the executive session to get legal advice on those topics. Superintendent Hiltz, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, my question, and it may be because I read this later in the development process, but I understood, under the resolutions, number one—I misread this, but I took the term or the phrase "where legally appropriate," and I applied it to items one, two, and three. And it's sort of implied again in number three, but here's the clarity I'm asking for from the board, and that may be some mild revision, because the language of number two that Director DeVola is recommending, we remove, which is "unless specifically compelled by the state." To me, that speaks to where legally appropriate, and it speaks to available legal steps. So I wonder whether items number one, two, and three should all follow the STEM phrase, directs the superintendent to, "where legally appropriate, update relevant administrative policy, ensure restrooms, ensure males," right? This is the bottom-line question. Is the board expecting us to develop administrative practices that violate known law? Or is the board asking us to implement this resolution compliant with law? That's the key question that I have for you as a superintendent.
I don't know that that determination can be made. I don't know that that determination can be made without an executive session to receive legal advice-
We agree.
-on what could be done. So do I have a board consensus to, well, I don't know if Director D'Avola, did you want to take, because we've done the two rounds real quick?
Yep. Well, I already know we don't have consensus for my second one, which is why I didn't ask for consensus for that one. I just wanted to make a point. With where we're going, I don't want to belabor this. I think this is important for us to move pretty quickly on in order to get this going. And if we're proposing a bunch of changes to it, which I'm not, I think as it stands, that one proposed change is going to be very important. I think we should just move it forward to our next meeting for an action item.
Before we do that, this is what I would like to do, is I would like to have an executive session to receive legal advice to the concerns of all board members. And I think that ties in with our fiduciary obligations to the district. And so I would like to propose, if I could get a consensus, to schedule an executive session, and then we can make a determination, either on changes and how to move forward. So if I could get people on microphone, if you are okay with me scheduling then an executive session. Oh, you said you had a question. I was just holding it to two rounds, but if you could make it brief, I'd appreciate it.
It will be brief. Is there a way to have an executive, to move it forward and have an executive session in between now and then?
We could have the executive session at the outset of your regular meeting. It's irregular, but it's not illegal. You could start with an executive session, have a chance for public comment, have the action item to be considered thereafter.
Okay, so then what we could do is look at moving this forward subject to an executive session prior to our April 10th work session to receive legal advice.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No, what you come out of with executive session won't have given the community time to read it.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Marie? I couldn't hear you.
If we come out of executive session and then choose to take action on anything that's been edited, the community hasn't seen it until right before we vote on it. We did that once. I don't think that that was the right thing to do then. I don't think it's the right thing to do now. You have a meeting April 10th, have the exec session whenever you want. We'll all figure it out, but whether we vote on it on April 10th or May 14th is not that materially different, because ain't anything changing in a month. Anything that they needed time to do wouldn't be in effect until next school year. So to me, it makes more sense to at least make sure people have had a chance to read whatever you come out of executive session with.
You know, it's interesting, I'm going to both agree with Director Laverne Wright and disagree with her just on one thing. The one change that was made before was two parents versus one parent consent, and that was actually her proposed revision. I did not feel like that was a big enough revision to have to have another month worth of discussion on an item. However, on this resolution, I think it's worthwhile to have a community input on any revisions. So I am going to say that I think that we need to schedule the executive session and move this to a later date after the community can see any revisions that come to the resolution. So what I'm hearing is that we have 3-2 to have an executive session and make sure that the public has the chance to look at any revisions. Am I correct on that?
You'd have a 4-1 minimum on that. If you're willing to do the executive session and then go a month later, then I agree to it. Then you have my agreement as well, and I don't know where Mike is on that.
I don't see myself supporting any version of this, so I'm still a no.
I would be, I would be for an executive session as long as we still have this as an action item in April. So I would propose we schedule it for next week.
I think I would like to have an executive session before April, but not immediately before the meeting, so that the community can see it.
So you're saying that you want the community to have the chance to see any revisions as well?
Correct, but that would mean an executive session next week.
And so last but not least, let's see if we can have an agreement that we will have an executive session next week, and that we will also make sure that any revisions are made available to the public before it is an action item on April 10th.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Director Thompson, my only night is Thursday next week.
Same, I'm traveling through Wednesday.
Okay, well, then I guess we will have an executive session next Thursday. Okay. And then we have information items, and we are adjourned. Bless you.